Good evening, everyone. This is the Planning Board meeting of October 13th, 2020. If we could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which stands one nation, indivisible, infinite, and just as for all.
All right, thank you. All right. The first we have on the agenda tonight is we have two sign permit applications. And the first one is Allstate 96 North Main Street. It's map 18 lot 3-B-R. And this is for a discussion and possible vote. Did you have, did you have any questions on this, Jim, before we go?
Maybe just have the applicant just get up and speak and then we can just ask questions.
Okay.
Yes, right by the microphone there.
It would be good if you could take your mask off and speak into the microphone so that you can be recorded. Give us your name and address, please.
Sure. Good evening. My name is Heather Dedco and I'm working with Philadelphia Sign on the Allstate project and my address is 27 Old Meeting House Road in Auburn, Mass. So it is a sign proposal. Allstate is taking a vacant tenant space in the plaza. It's a pretty straightforward application. There is an existing tenant directory there on site and they will take the open space on the pylon sign, the third space down. The sign is currently externally illuminated. It has two ground lights, so that lighting will just remain as is. The panels themselves are not illuminated. And on the building, it'll be a non-illuminated aluminum sign, 11 square foot. And they're also proposing some window graphics with the agency name and phone number. They do a little swoosh in the window. It's kind of like around the right side of the window. That's kind of part of their logo. And then a small plaque with the hours of operation.
All right, we had looked at this. I think Jim may have some questions.
Sure.
Sure. What's the total square footage of all the signage that you're seeking?
So... It'd be 11, 22, 25, 25, not counting the vinyl graphics in the window. So the panel in the freestanding, the wall sign and the plaque, the total 25.
Okay. Did you look at the sign section of the bylaw? Especially for the Village District? Because in the bylaw, that section of it, they have a maximum of eight square feet per business.
Okay. I didn't really review it because once I knew we had to come to the board, they just asked me to apply to come.
Right, right. I just wanted to, I only had a chance to review it today, so otherwise I would have asked you these questions before being here at a public hearing, or a public meeting, I should say.
So, okay, so I have the, their village. Yep.
So Village Business. And then, so that was just, you know, the thing that kind of cropped up at me. There is a mechanism where the board can approve through a special permit over the required amount. You know, referred to that section. So that'd be under Section 3570 of the zoning bylaw. And so acting as the special permit granting authority, the planning board may issue special permits to exceed the number and size of signs and to allow internally lit signs within the highway commercial, general business, village, green business park, industrial C, industrial A, industrial B, and airport planning zoning districts.
Am I reading the chart correctly that they're only allowed a total of eight square foot per business?
Yes, so that's, yeah, total of all signs is eight square feet per business. And then two signs per business, but then I think on the directory sign, that doesn't count on the square footage, but the directories are limited to two square feet for each business. And I know that they're big ones.
So could I ask a couple of questions? Maybe you don't know the answer, but would every tenant in that plaza had to have gone for a special permit?
That I'm not sure. I was, you know, I've only been here for about a year now, so
Because...
Taking a look with fresh eyes.
It just looks like that tenant directory sign was designed, I mean, to not accommodate the size allowed.
Right. So, but that's something, you know, that the board can discuss. Maybe there was a special permit in previous years, but I'm not aware of any special permits.
Yeah, I'm not sure what, you know, that particular business area's been there for a while and those signs, you know, may not be according to, you know, what we require today. So... We'd have to take a look at that. And I don't even know if we have any records of what went on in that time.
Yeah, so we'd have to go through the files just to see what we have for approved permits. I mean, I think, you know, so one route to go is, you know, if they have to come back, they can come back and just do a special permit, get approved for the total number of signs and sizes that they want. You know, so looking through the package, you know, everything looks very nice and attractive, you know, so from that viewpoint, it looks good. But the only issue is that when you add it all up together, exceeds the amount in that particular district.
I do, I understand. I do understand. And is that a separate application? Do you have, is there a specific application for special permit?
Yeah, so you, you know, you include the sign permit, but it's a special permit. And then I think the board can also waive, because you, you know, the special permits, it's a public hearing, requires notification of a butters, and some other requirements, but I think we can scope it down just to say, okay, well we have the permit application. Is there a way we can just get them down to what we need? Like, for example, the guy down in Tremont Street has the workman spaces. They had a garage that wanted to be located, and that was just a very simplified special permit process.
I just saw in my notes that I was here in 2014 for a special permit for General, Dollar General, so I must have done it. So I must have instructions in here somewhere. Okay, so from what I'm hearing is if we could just try to see a little research and see if there's anything in place already to cover the signage, but if not, then I'll just have to submit the application for special permit.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm not sure if that's grandfathered or not, and I don't know how the grandfathering would work, whether it would be the same business updating their sign. And since the sign was already oversized because it had been constructed before the new sign bylaws, I don't know if that carries to a new owner of the business, though.
I think we'd have to look at the file just to see, because it could have been a sign application that went to the planning board way back when approving that directory sign out front, because there's a directory sign out by the street area with all the different business names on it. Then it appears, so the Allstate, is that covering up a former sign that used to be there?
It's blank now. So if you see on the drawing, there's two, there's Honeydew and then another tenant, and then they'd be the third one.
Cornerstones, yeah.
Yeah, correct.
Yeah, cornerstones.
So I just drove by there. Now it's blank now. It's blank.
Oh, the Allstate thing is blank now?
Yeah, well, on the tenant directory, it's just...
Oh, on the directory, okay.
And they have a banner up on the building now.
Right, so I've seen that. Is that banner covering an old kind of sign?
It might be. It might be.
Okay.
Because they'll patch it. They'll fix anything they need to fix before they put the permanent sign on there.
Okay. Just trying to think if there's anything else. Because I think, yeah, I mean, I think what you have here looks attractive. I don't, you know, that's just me, the planner. I don't know what the board members think, if anyone wants to...
Well, I would think if that sign was a little bit bigger than what's required now, but it fits what was there before and fits in with the other signs that are there currently, I think it would look funny to have a smaller sign there, I think. To have it the way it's shown on this picture would be the way to go, to replace the old sign that was there.
They designed it nicely to fit right into that arch structure. But what I'm hearing is that if they, even if there wasn't, if there's no blanket special permit in place for the plaza or previous decision that we can go forward with, even the tenant panel would need a special permit because that's 11 square feet, so that even maxes out. Doesn't that max out the total signage? Because they're only allowed eight square for total.
Right, because, yeah, eight square feet.
For the business, so...
Is the 11 for both sides? That's the total for both sides?
Well, we usually don't count one face, so if it's double-sided, we just count one face.
So you just want to go back and take a look at the file and see what's there and...
Yeah.
Yeah.
Can you come, come back in two weeks? That's our next meeting.
Okay.
And we should, Jim should contact you, or you can contact Jim
Okay.
to see how he's going on his research
Yeah, no problem.
and what we can do here.
Great. I'm happy to come back. I'm like, I'm happy to be back to the meetings. This is the first in-person meeting I've done since March, so I'm happy to be back at them.
Are you Heather Dedco?
I am. Dedco, yes.
Okay.
Yep. Okay, great. I understand.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I have a quick question, Jim. Are we broadcasting through Zoom too, also?
To Sue Hanna? Sue Hanna's our Planning Board Secretary.
Is she running a Zoom? Sue running a Zoom?
Well, she's, she's taking minutes via Zoom.
Oh, okay, because I, somebody sent me a question saying that they hadn't been able to get on the Zoom meeting.
Okay.
So I didn't know if it was a public access Zoom or...
Well, they could. If they go to the planning board minutes, so they have to go to the town website, click on the link that's on the second page of the planning board agenda, and they can access the meeting that way.
Oh, okay. I think, I think that if the, Sue might have to add them into the meeting room, but I'm not sure. But I just wanted to clarify that for one of our interested viewers. Thank you for the time.
All right, so... So we'll just table that sign permit application until two weeks from now at our next meeting when they come back and we're able to do some research.
All right, so we have additional people who've joined us via Zoom.
Okay. All right, so as I was saying, Jim, that, so we'll just table that sign permit application until two weeks from now?
Continue.
Oh, do you want to continue? Okay, we have to continue that?
Yeah.
Okay.
We can just continue it and then we can, we'll make a determination.
So do you want, so we should vote on that too then if we're going to continue, right?
Motion to continue?
Second.
All right, so we have a motion to continue Allstate 96 North Main Street sign permit application. We have a motion by Carney and a second by John Gasky. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right.
So those are all in favor?
We're all in favor, yes.
Okay. Motion by Carney and second by...
John.
John.
All right. All right, so next we have Plymouth County Growers, 2 Montello Street, map 22 lot 5-B-R. Discussion and possible vote, and this is for, this is another sign application. Is there anybody here to talk about this? Good evening.
Good evening, guys. I'm Tom Lance. I'm one of the owners of Plymouth County Growers Growing Supplies. We are just looking to basically put signage back on a building that had signage prior. The size, everything. Sinorama in Kingston is going to be doing the work for us. It's for the pylon out in front also, so there's going to be a signage out on the pylon where there's existing signage already. And up on the marquee above the storefront also.
Okay, where is, where is this? I didn't get it.
It's down in Abashon parking lot.
Oh, okay.
That, right next to, yeah, Silo Marketplace.
Okay.
Exactly right next to Tiki Kai, where it used to be.
Okay.
It was a stencil place.
Is there any available open space on the street sign, the marquee sign?
We're going on where the stenciling place was. We're just, this is coming off and ours is going on. And that's the green with just the Plymouth County Growers in white. That's going to be on both sides.
So is this a new office that, that's, that you're putting the sign on, or...
It's a new business.
It's a new business, yeah.
We're opening up over there.
Okay. So what do you do there?
It's hydroponics, growing supplies, like soil and pots and nutrients and things like that.
Oh, okay.
Was there something like that before?
I think about seven or eight years ago, you guys used to have something over there like that.
Obviously this is for public?
Yes, yes. Yeah, we actually have a store in Kingston.
Was there any questions that you had, Jim, before we, the board asked any more questions?
So just to double check, so you're proposing 21 square feet for the sign that's going to be on the building?
Yes.
Okay. And, and then the signs that are going to be out on the directory or pylon sign?
Right.
That's going to be a total, what, 16 plus square feet?
Yeah, whatever that, whatever it is.
The strip is.
15 by 30 or whatever the heck that comes out.
Okay, because, okay, so that goes, because in highway commercial, so it's 32 square feet, so the sign on the building fits. And then the pylon signs, they're supposed to be... Let me go back to that. Directory sign. So it's supposed to be two square feet for each business. So I think if you wanted to go oversized, you would have to come back with a special permit on that one, because the, we'll just take the one face. That's 29. So I guess, no, that puts you underneath the amount. Just kind of looking at this again. It's kind of a confusing bylaw, so that's why it takes some time to get through it. So in highway commercial, you're allowed up to 32 square feet. And then the, you know, the directory is a two square feet for each business. Did you want to go larger with that? Because if you do, you have to go come back with a special permit for that.
No, we don't want to go larger than that. It's whatever that was already pre-existing for that space was.
Okay. So, yeah, that was more or less the questions, you know, because the, you know, the, again, you know, to allow the larger square footage on that directory sign, I had to do some research to see if that was something that was maybe approved years ago for all the businesses when they first went in.
Yeah, that may be grandfathered. I mean, I don't see how you can be changing the sign sizes, or you should say, change sign sizes on a directory that's already existed and has signs of a certain size that were already established at the time that the pylon was put up, the directory.
So...
I was thinking the same thing.
Yeah. Because I know we've run into this, you know, before with different businesses, you know, new businesses coming in, replacing old businesses, and then using the same pylons and existing placards with signs would be posted, so... And I forget exactly, I thought that we just allowed that to be as proposed, as long as it fits that space. But that's something, I don't know, the build inspector didn't have any memory of doing this before?
No, no. We'd have to go back into the files just to see what was approved before for that, for that marketplace.
Well, I don't know, I'd have to make some calls and talk to some people to see, you know, what we had done before.
Well, if we're saying that currently it's 32 square feet that they're authorized, is that what you were saying?
Right, that's the maximum of all signs in the highway commercial district, which this address is located in.
Okay, so the main sign is 21 on the building, right?
That's correct.
So the, based on the measurements, the option one that they're, that we have here for to put out on the pylon, the size on that one's only 8.6 square feet.
Mm-hmm.
That's well within 32.
No, he wants two, one on either side of the pylon, though. North and south side of the Silo Marketplace.
Wouldn't that be a given, though?
Yeah, you would think that that would be one sign.
Well, a previous sign person...
I mean, we were talking about, we were talking about down in the Village District, the sign being...
Right, it's two-sided, but it counts as one.
Yeah.
Counts as one, so seems to me like that would be a, kind of a given, going from, given that all the signs, when you're, when you're looking at a sign from the street, it's, all of them are double-sided.
Right, yeah, yeah. I would, I would go along with that. So he would be under the, under the square footage then?
Under the square footage.
Yeah. And it would fit the pylon. It would fit what was existing there.
Yeah, yeah. Absolutely.
So I think this one's okay. I think this one's fine. Any other thoughts? Any other questions?
It's replaced, I'm sorry, it's replacing an existing sign for business that's already gone in one of the slots?
Right. On the pylon, it's going to be replacing one that's still up there right now.
Okay.
And on the building, they had taken it down.
Right, right. Don't want people knocking on the door. Motion to approve? I mean...
Yeah, I'll second it.
So we have a motion to approve by Carney Shea. We have a second by John Gasky. Those in favor?
Aye.
The aye. And so that was unanimous? And...
So Sue, motion by Shea, second by Gasky, unanimous.
And what do you, business hours going to be there?
Probably going to be like nine in the morning till like seven at night, probably something like that. Weekend, we're not sure about Mondays. We're closed in Kingston on Mondays, but we might decide to open over here. Yeah, it's just basic business hours, you know.
Okay.
Once in a while, like if you have a sale, like on, what is it, Black Friday, we might be open till 10 or 11, but we get tired, so we want to go to bed.
You'd be open weekends?
Yes, definitely weekends.
Okay, yeah. And then, so what do you sell there?
Dirt, the pots that go, the dirt to go into, nutrients, lighting, tents, just a whole bunch of different stuff. You know, vegetable seeds when spring comes. We got those in there. We like to, we're actually, in Kingston, we were doing a tomato contest for the kids. Kids could come in, get free tomato plants and grow them out for the summer, come in, weigh the tomato, and at the end of the year, they get a prize. Probably trying to, think about trying to do it again, you know, because it actually worked out well because of the families. We didn't really get too many people to weigh the tomato, but they came back and thanked us because it brought the families together to do something every day after work or whatever. It was kind of cool.
Well, thank you for that information. I just thought you might like to get some free advertising.
We appreciate it.
And so, yeah, I guess you'll be all set? Um, no. All right, you're all set. Good luck with your business.
Thank you guys very much.
Congratulations.
Totally appreciate it.
Take care. Have a good one. Thanks.
All right, next we're going to talk about minor modification. And it's for three solar systems that had been approved before. And so we have some minor modifications to those fields, to those plans. And so we have Sarah Sterns with us tonight, and I don't know...
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, everyone. For the record, my name is Sarah Sterns and I work for a civil engineering, local civil engineering firm called Beals and Thomas. With me is Zach Farkas from Borrego Solar. Zach and I work together with our teams to permit the three projects that we'll be discussing tonight over the past couple of years with your predecessors, other than the chairman, of course. And on the line, we have two other of our team members joining us via Zoom tonight to be available for any questions or comments. So as the chairman mentioned, we're here to talk about a minor requirement from Eversource. As these projects have been refined and further developed, a required study has taken place and wrapped up this past summer with a number of requirements that affect the number of poles that had been proposed under the original permit applications at the points of interconnection where the solar arrays connect to the grid. So if it's okay with the board, I thought maybe I'd just run through a full, a few bullet points about the general requirements, and Zach can speak to the technical reasons for that if we need to get into that level of detail. And then we can look at each of the three projects individually, if you'd like to do it that way, if that works for the board. If you have other suggestions, that's fine too.
That'll work, Sarah, yeah.
All right. So I'm just going to run down my list just to make sure I tick off everything. So as I mentioned, the projects were... So as I mentioned, the projects were developed and permitted by Borrego, who has teamed with Clearway Energy. Jen and Anna are on the line, listening in. All three of these projects were reviewed by multiple municipal regulatory bodies. They were peer-reviewed by the Town of Carver's peer-review engineer, Fussin O'Neill, with a number of back-and-forth comments and modifications throughout those processes. And, you know, as I mentioned, the Eversource study came back with a few reasons for these updates to the layout of the interconnection poles. And, you know, we kind of went back and forth whether or not this needed to be brought back to the board, but just taking a conservative approach and just making sure we covered all the bases, we thought we'd come before you and just kind of explain what we were doing and what the differences are. So now that the projects are in a more detailed design development, we wanted to just let the board members know that Eversource has come up with these items that really affect the metering component and equipment for the interconnection and meet some additional safety requirements that have been developed. It's really-
I hate to trouble you, but can you pull the microphone a little?
Sure.
Thank you.
And again, it's really just limited to the number of interconnection poles and, in a couple of the cases, the configuration of the poles themselves. And that's really the difference that we're talking about and that we've tried to illuminate in the updated plans for each of the projects that you hopefully have in your packages that were sent in. The work that's proposed is within the originally approved footprint of each of the projects, so nothing's more expansive than it was in terms of the footprint. And really, you know, there are a couple different names that were flying around, but the ones that are recognizable, I think, from the permitting history is, and I'm just going in the order that they were listed on the agenda for this evening, but Zero Hammond Street Photovoltaic and Energy Storage Project, which was approved in February 2009, 2019, excuse me. 276 Federal Road Solar Project, which was approved just before that in December of 2018. And then just up the street from that, 59 Federal Road, which was approved in August 2016. And we actually came back in July 2019 to do a minor modification for a similar type thing that was adjusted on that project as well. And just because I know so many of you are new to the board and are not necessarily familiar with these projects, I just took the liberty of using our zoning map and just kind of added, just so you know where in the town that these are located. I really, I just added kind of a couple of red dots. You can see that they're in the southern area of the town. Just to give you a sense, we're down near the Ocean Spray Receiving Plant. Almost directly across the street is where the 59 Federal Road Solar Project is located. And then further south from there, almost to the Wareham-Carver Town Line, is where the other two are, almost diagonally across the street from each other, Hammond Street and the 276 Federal.
There's a large landfill.
Yep, just south of the landfill. And there's actually an existing solar array there that was Phase 1, built as Phase 1 of 276 Federal. So that's really the kind of overview of what we're here to talk about tonight. Do you want to add any detail to that, Zach?
Not a tremendous amount. So Zach Farkas, Borrego Solar. As Sarah said, I was in front of, not this board, but this board a few years ago, and we went through the permitting and a lot of kind of discussion with the board to kind of make these projects out of sight, out of mind, as they're going to be when they're constructed. So with building permits about to be submitted to the building department, we just wanted to come before you guys to see if you had any questions about the changes that are, that's really driving from Eversource. Kind of when you develop these projects, we do the best we can, understanding the engineering spec that's available, but that's changed a little bit from the utility, so we updated our plans accordingly.
So I don't know if anybody has any questions initially. I think they're going to go through the three solar fields that they're going to talk about. Then you can go through each one individually, so, because each one has a different amount of poles and stuff that's going on there, so if it's, if you want to continue, you know, all I can say is, is that, you know, these had been approved by, it's, you know, gone through conservation, it's gone through the planning board. We did site walks out there. So, so these are what I would consider and what we had done in the past with different projects, some were solar fields. But if they're going to move a transformer or if they're going to put in some additional poles, instead of just filing a whole new application for a whole new project, they'll just come to us and say, this is just a minor modification. So it's, and it's, so it's for us to determine that. I mean, to me, it seems like a minor modification, nothing that we hadn't done before, so. Given that, we can go on and select one at a time, I guess, if we do it in detail.
Sure. And I'll be very brief. There's not really that much to talk about. But I'll just start with Zero Hammond Street, again, just since it's the first on the, listed on the agenda. And really, I've just kind of picked out the pertinent information for this one. So we've shown, again, just to give you context, this is the entirety of the permitted array. What we're talking about here is the series of customer-owned utility poles that will service the interconnection to the grid. So if you can see that this is a de minimis area that we're talking about as relative to the entirety of the project, and we've just sort of blown it up so that you can read it a little bit more clearly. But I think the key takeaway is that the original approved plan had six utility poles, six utility poles actually all the way down Hammond Street. And for this one, we've removed the customer-owned poles on Hammond Street and put them all on the site. So where there was one pole up here, there's now seven, but there are no longer poles proposed on Hammond Street itself. So really, not a huge change. Everything has just been pulled back onto the site itself.
I have a quick question, if it's all right. Are these proposed poles to be put in, within 100-foot buffer zone of the wetlands?
Some of them, yes.
Have you received prior approval through-
Yes.
Conservation Commission for this?
Yes, we have.
So you have, was it the ANOI approved?
We filed an NOI, and we received an order of conditions from the Conservation Commission. Again, the footprint of the work hasn't changed. There are portions of each of the projects that were within jurisdictional buffer zones that have all been approved. Thank you. I'll just go on to the next one, and if anyone has questions about specifics, we can flip back. So going across the street, across Federal Road to 276 Federal, again, the point of interconnection to Federal Road is this little area here at the site entrance. Going up here just for visual, and I'll just, we've updated from the original plan per the Eversource requirements from six poles to 11 poles. And then a little bit further north at 59 Federal, at the site entrance up the Federal Road, we've gone from three to seven poles per Eversource requirements. On your plans, we've kind of shaded out the original approved locations of the poles. Again, more for your own context, not having been part of the review of the original project, just for comparison.
Just for my own edification, the, what was the reason for the increase in the number of poles?
So when we, sorry. When we originally permitted the projects in the fall of 18, or excuse me, the winter of 18 and 2019, the SMART program was not fully released. The SMART program is the incentive program under which these projects are built. So we were basically doing the best we could, kind of kicking a field goal to a goalpost that we knew was in the area. So as the projects completed their development maturity with the Interconnection Group, we finally got our designs back from Eversource. And they show all the required equipment for metering, for safety, for disconnects, for reliability, all that type of stuff. And so that, the specifications that the utility holds for interconnecting solar basically changed a little bit.
Right.
And so in order to meet those specifications, there's a certain quantity of equipment we need. Transformers, meters, redundant meters, reclosers, and disconnects. And so basically, we have more equipment than we originally had poles permitted. So as Sarah said, we're, in some cases, we're going from four poles to seven poles or from six poles to 11 poles. It's simply to hold the equipment that's required by the utility that we frankly didn't know was going to be needed when we permitted it back in 18, 19.
It's all the backup, all the backup stuff, and-
I mean, if you can imagine, like, to really simplify it, you've got all this energy, electricity, electrons flowing from the solar project to the grid.
Right.
You know, these are $20 million paperweights if we're not counting how much energy's being sold, right? So there's meters and redundant meters, because if something, if the meter goes down for some reason, a chipmunk chews through a wire, whatever, you get a sunny day, like, all that power's still going. So now there's requirements for multiple meters. And then you've got the typical things like disconnects. If a utility crew is servicing the distribution lines on Federal Road because a tree fell down on them, they need to go to that solar project and basically disconnect it from the array so that they could service the grid. So there's all these things that are very reasonable. But we designed the project basically a little bit, you know, I don't want to say underdesigned it, but we did it to the spec of 2017, 18. So ultimately, with more and more solar getting interconnected across the Commonwealth, the utilities are saying, you know what, we could really use X, Y, and Z on these projects.
Any other questions?
I believe all these projects were supposed to be completely screened from Federal Furnace and Hammond Street, is that correct?
It's Federal Road.
Federal Road.
Federal Furnace is Plymouth.
Yeah.
Yes, that was reviewed as part of the site plan review application and special permit process. So that was signed off on by the board and the peer-review engineer.
All right, so currently, that's where it stands. And the addition of the poles and the extra work is still going to maintain the screening?
It's, everything is within the same limit of work, the same footprint. Where there were poles, there are still poles presented. So it's really just increasing the number or changing the number and the configuration.
So it will still be completely screened from the two roads?
The panels are completely screened, as required by the bylaw.
And what about this stack of telephone poles that you're putting in at, how many? Seven or eleven?
Which project?
Zero Hammond?
So Hammond is actually moving all of the poles back from anywhere visible from Federal Road. If you're familiar with the area, Federal Road is the main drag down to the Wareham-Carver Town Line. Hammond Street veers off into the woods. And I think what was proposed on Hammond at the beginning of the project was invisible from Federal Road anyway. And now we've pulled all of that, those customer-owned poles, onto the site itself, which is set extremely far back from Federal Road to begin with. So you can't see anything from Federal Road, particularly on that site.
Okay.
That's actually really a good point. That project is actually going to benefit from these changes. We were originally going to bring our power from the site to Federal Road, but now Eversource is going to bring their power up to us because Hammond Street is actually a public way. We didn't know that. It's just a little dirt road that kind of cuts up through the woods, as Sarah said. So the interconnection poles, even though there were fewer of them, were originally right on Federal Road. Now they're 670 feet or so deeper into the woods up Hammond Street. So that one's an improvement, even though there's more. But as Sarah said, development footprint for all the projects stays the exact same. We're just cramming a little extra material, equipment in that same footprint.
Yes, I just, I could see that, but I just wanted to confirm that they were still supposed to be screened to the greatest extent possible from Federal Road.
Right. Interestingly, so I've been a Carver resident for almost 20 years. I drove by Hammond Street three or four times when we first started this project, and I never even knew it was there. I mean, it is really, it's a little teeny road, just sort of veered off of Federal Road. If you're coming south, you'll drive by it every time and never know it's there. If you turn around after you miss it multiple times and head north, then you catch like a glimpse of the street sign there. So it's really set way back from Federal Road.
Thank you.
I was just wondering, I drove by, because I wanted to see, it was an area I've never been in, and I've been here for quite a few years.
Yep.
There was a sign there at one of the entrances on Federal Road. It said something about pollutants, and this is where they rain off or something, a sign.
Did it have to do with the landfill, the cap landfill?
It was across the street, so I don't know.
Yeah, I would say. I don't know what the sign is, but I would say-
And I have it on my phone, which I don't have with me.
Oh, okay.
I took a picture of it because I was confused, and I'm new here, and I just want to make sure.
Yeah.
You know, I want to know as much as I can about this area.
Right. I don't, I mean, I'm not familiar with the sign itself, but I would think any sign down in that area is related to the landfill. I'm not, I don't want to point fingers, but not knowing what it said, I don't think there's any other signage down there associated with the solar project.
It looks like we've been here for a while.
Yeah.
And then I was wondering, what does one have to do with the other, so that was the-
Yeah, these are completely separate from the landfill.
All right, any other questions by any of the board members? Seeing none. Let's, we'll go, we'll take one at a time. We have three. So I'll entertain a motion to approve the minor modification for Zero Hammond Street by Clearway Energy.
Our motion to approve it, but I don't think we should acknowledge that the project need to, that should the project need to implement subsequent minor adjustments, that it should be just a given. I mean, that's one of the things asked for in here. But as far as these go, at the zero, I would make a motion to approve the minor modifications.
Okay. So we have a motion. I hear a second.
Second.
So a second by Ellen. And so we have a motion and a second. Those in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed. So it was unanimous.
For Zero, approved.
So the next, entertain a motion by, for 276 Federal Road, Clearway Energy to approve the minor modification.
Motion to approve as presented.
So we have a motion by Cornelia Shea and a second by Ellen Sardino. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Okay, so that was unanimous. Okay, the third, minor modification, I'll entertain a motion for a minor modification approval for Clearway Energy 59 Federal Road.
Motion to approve is stated.
Second.
Okay, so we had a motion by John Gasky, seconded by Cornelia Shea. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. So it's unanimous.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you all. Thank you, members, for being here.
Yes, thank you for going through.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
So I do have kind of like a draft decision for one of these. Do you want to just hand these to the members so they can just kind of take a look at it?
Okay.
Thank you.
Do you want to, do you want to read this, Jim, or?
Sure, I can just, so what I did, usually with the minor modification, you base it off the previous decisions for it. I usually do that on the Monday before Tuesday meetings, but we're in shorter time. So I did one for Fifty-Nine Federal Road, and then for the most part, the information you have in the findings, and it'll be, similar information be put in the conditions, but this is kind of a, I'll be filling in the template a little bit later. So at its meeting of October 13, 2020, the Planning Board voted to approve the minor modification of the special permit and site plan review previously approved by this board on August 9, 2016, and modified on July 9, 2019. Findings, the Planning Board received an application for minor modification to site plan dated October 6, 2020, and a cover letter dated October 2, 2020 with supporting materials from Clearway Energy Group, the applicant. Clearway has acquired the solar project from Borrego, which is to be situated on land owned by AD Makepeace, located at Fifty-Nine Federal Road in Carver, Mass. The project received a site plan review and special permit from the Planning Board on August 9, 2016, which was modified by the Planning Board on July 9, 2019. The decisions dated July 23, 2019. The applicant is seeking a minor modification to this project because of a one-year-long transmission study conducted by Eversource and the affected system operators, which was completed in June 2020. Eversource is requiring the applicant to implement minor technical changes to electrical configuration and the point of interconnection. The changes will allow the applicant to be in compliance with Eversource's SMART program metering standards and safety and reliability requirements. The approved site plans call for a pole-mounted interconnection of three poles. The modification will require the, increasing the number of poles at the site to seven poles, but all poles will be located within the existing perimeter footprint. The additional poles will hold Eversource solar and storage metering equipment for the SMART program, hold equipment for safe disconnects and protection of solar and storage equipment from the grid, and allow Eversource to safely access its equipment. The applicant has provided an exhibit entitled Fifty-Nine Federal Road PV and ES Project: Revised Interconnection Exhibit, prepared by Beals and Thomas, dated October 2, 2020.
Okay.
And then the board voted for Zero to approve the minor modification with the following conditions. In some of this case, condition one, prior to issuance of a building permit, a true copy of this decision and the decisions dated August 9, 2016, and July 23, 2019, as registered at the Plymouth County Registry of Deeds, shall be submitted to the Planning Board. Condition two, the applicant shall adhere to the Planning Board decisions dated August 9, 2016, and July 23, 2019, except as modified by this decision. And then condition number three, the applicant may modify the project as shown on the exhibit entitled Fifty-Nine Federal Road PV and ES Project: Revised Interconnection Exhibit, Prepared by Beals and Thomas, dated 10/2, 2020. And then on the page three, it'll be all the required signatures. So what I'm going to do is I'll be, I need to make some revisions to this, plus prepare the other two, and then reach out to members to come sign those.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Jim. Okay, so on other business, Planning Board member notes. Is anybody, anybody have anything to, they'd like to say?
No, but, well-
Wait, start of the bylaw committee.
We would, we would like to invite anybody interested in the bylaw study committee to join us, or at least reach out to us with their concerns. Our next meeting is next Tuesday at 5:30, I believe, downstairs in Meeting Room Four at Town Hall.
Yep.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Corny. Anyone else? All right, seeing none. Planning Director notes.
Corny just gave the update.
All right.
Now, one item here, so at our last Planning Board meeting, the Planning Board took a vote to recommend members to be appointed by the town administrator. And so after that meeting, I was talking with the town administrator's office, and they said, well, we don't, he doesn't really need to appoint that because it's a Planning Board Subcommittee, and if it was a select board committee, or say, a meeting established by town meeting, then he would be the appointing authority for that. So I don't know if the board wants to vote to confirm, you know, the recommendation we took at the previous meeting.
I, I will make a motion to confirm the membership as discussed and voted on at last meeting for the TDR bylaw study committee.
Actually zoning, zoning bylaw study committee.
Zoning bylaw study committee. So my motion would be to the Planning Board to approve the membership of the-
Zoning bylaw study committee.
Which I have to get better at saying.
So we hear a second.
Of course, second.
So, so Corny made a motion, Ellen seconded it. Those in favor, we say aye.
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 And so that was unanimous. All right, thank you. Anything else, Jim?
Other than, so I guess we have our, next meeting date is 10/27. Oh, to add to that, we do have a applicant who's going to be coming in for medical marijuana facility. And we also have a solar project that is submitted, you know, for site plan review, special permit. Those will probably be in November. And with the marijuana facility, kind of anticipating a larger crowd, so I made arrangements with the Carver High School Middle School for space in the auditorium. The only hitch to that is that that facility is only going to be available on Wednesdays because of the school schedule. They're going Monday, Tuesday. Wednesday's an off day where Tuesday night to go through and clean the whole building, and then everything's ready for Thursday, Friday, for the next group of kids. So that means that we do get to these hearings. We'll have to shift over to a Wednesday night, more so on the marijuana, because I figure at least maybe the first or second meeting will have, generate a lot of interest from people, and so we just want to be able to accommodate any crowds that would come into that. And then the other thing, too, with, in November, there's some holidays. You know, we get, first of all, there's Veterans Day, which I, I think it's the Wednesday.
Wednesday.
Yep. And then we also have Thanksgiving Day, so the schedule's going to be adjusted to kind of deal with those public hearings and also deal with the holidays. So it won't be, no, so once we, once I get the application for the marijuana facility, then I can kind of better predict what the schedule will be. But I just want to give everybody a heads up so that they're aware of it, and, you know, I'll follow up an email so that everyone has that, so they can pencil it in in advance.
Okay, thank you, Jim. I did see in the packet the minutes, the approval for the minutes, or the minutes for approval of 9/22/2020. Well, so I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes. Motion to approve? Do I have a second?
Oh, yes, I see.
Okay, so Ellen seconded. So we had a motion to approve by Cornelia Shea and a second by Ellen Sodillo, and so those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so that was unanimous. So our next meeting date will be 10/27, so the 27th of this month, and that'll be here at 7 o'clock. So entertain a motion for adjournment.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
So we have a motion from Cornelia Shea, seconded by John Gasky. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And that's unanimous. Thank you and good night, everyone.